Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have one item on the agenda, which is budget presentations and deliberations. I want to welcome our AST Administrator Jan Ha.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen so we can start the presentation. Did that come up? Do you see that?
No.
What's that?
No.
Okay, let me try that again. I think I forgot to click one thing. Share screen. There we go. How's that?
It's, yep, we see it.
Great. Good evening, Council President Perez and members of the council. Tonight, we continue with our department budget presentations. I will start us off with administrative services, followed by community services, police, city attorney, human resources, risk management, and then court. The administrative services department budget starts on page 3-32 of your budget book. This chart represents the organizational chart for the administrative services department. We are organized into three separate divisions. Finance is headed up by Carrie Roller, fiscal services director with 21 FTEs. Information technology is headed up by Mehdi Saadri, information technology director with 20 FTEs, and Jason Seth heading up the city clerk's office with six employees. The proposed budget for '21-'22 does not include any additional staff since we are proposing a base line budget. This is our department mission statement. Some of our customers are internal and some are external. For example, businesses are utility billing. In either case, our mission is to provide service through efficient and accessible information. This slide reflects the core services provided by finance division of AST. Finance covers all financial matters and is organized into four separate work groups. Financial operations includes payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable. Taxing and licensing is our second work group. Utility billing, which also includes cash receiving. And then the final work group is budget and accounting, which includes budget, financial reporting, and general accounting. This slide represents the core services provided by our information technology department. It includes maintenance and support of network infrastructure, voice and data communication systems, application development and support, geographic information systems, and user support. This slide reflects the core services provided by the city clerk's office. It includes legislative and administrative support, records management and records request fulfillment, and hearing examiner coordination and support. AST impacts several of the city's service areas: safety and health, utilities and environment, representative government, and internal support. The majority of our costs are for internal support services. We are proposing a budget of $12.7 million for 2021 and $13 million for 2022, maintaining our current staffing levels at 49 FTEs. Even without an increase in our FTEs, there are some increases to our budget. Particularly, the ones that stands out is the additional cost of IT service contracts, additional licenses, and applications. We also are recognizing some additional expenditures because of a requirement to reclassify certain types of expenditures by state auditor's office. And then there are some additional interfund payments for IT and city clerk, I'm sorry, for finance and city clerk because of IT-increased technology cost. This next slide can be found on page 3-34 in your preliminary budget book. I apologize that the print is small and a little bit difficult to read. AST operates 18 programs, 14 of which fall in the internal support city service area. The slide shows performance metrics by city service area, and I just would like to highlight a few of those. We are very proud that we have been able to upgrade the city's bond rating to AAA in 2019, which is the highest rating that a city can get. We processed over 200 legislative documents, which includes agendas, minutes, ordinances, and resolutions, and nearly 700 public records requests. We have answered phone calls and utility billings in less than five minutes 100% of the time and reduced utility billing aged accounts in 2019. And we have also maintained our uptime for our computer systems throughout 2019 at 99%. During this biennium, we've had a number of accomplishments in finance. The Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the city a certificate of excellence in financial reporting and the budget award. And the city has actually been getting both of those prestigious awards for over 30 years. We implemented state-approved online filing portal through FileLocal for BNO tax and business licensing. We transitioned to a new system of record for the tax and license group. We reorganized finance to streamline operations. And we expanded our inclusion and purchasing and contracting by gathering additional data on over 2,000 vendors. We expanded the use of Laserfish for electronically filing utility billing and tax and business license records. IT has also been very busy. We established a governance board and steering committees for information technology. We added and enhanced numerous systems, expanding online customer service and improving business processes. Some of the examples include our enterprise customer relationship management system, work order asset management for public works, parks, and facilities, a recreation management system, business license and tax system, and many, many more, which you can find a lot of examples of on page 3-37. We expanded connectivity to various cities' facilities in collaboration with community economic development and public works and other local and regional partners. We supported the regional fire authority in the technology transition to providing their own technology. We provided services in support of telework during COVID. We've continued server virtualization to reduce costs and increase redundancy. And we've conducted an IT security assessment and technology business impact analysis. And of course, the city clerk's division has been, has had quite a few accomplishments during the biennium as well. We submitted the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee report to demonstrate the city's compliance with the Public Records Act. And actually, they could submit it two months earlier, early before the deadline. We reorganized the city clerk division, which modernized the division to comply with, and complied with local, federal, state, and local laws. It better meets our residents and staff needs, and it aligns the division better with the city's business plan. We automated several digital record-keeping processes through Laserfish. We enhanced digital recording procedures with King County's Recorder's Office. We enhanced policies and procedures. We provided training for volunteer board and commission members and implemented a new email archive system to streamline email search and disclosure procedures. And give due credit to HR for proposing and developing and implementing a employment, a supported employment program. Our city clerk, Jason Seth, has actually helped partner with them and trained and hired the new, the city's first supported employment employee. Looking forward for '21-'22, finance has quite a few goals. One of them includes reviewing and auditing various internal controls, various functions throughout the city. We also plan to create specialized training and user manuals to ensure that the city's assets and resources are properly protected. We plan to collaborate with IT to expand the use of Laserfish. And of course, we plan to keep clean financial audits from this Washington State Auditor's Office. We want to enhance commitment and focus on customer service, particularly to the underserved and vulnerable population. We continue to refine the rent and results efforts through improvements in performance data collection. And we are certainly, we certainly intend to continue to receive the certificate of excellence in financial reporting and the budget award from GFLA. Information technology has quite a bit on their plate for the upcoming biennium. They plan to update IT policies, procedures, and service level agreements, continue to improve network security, resiliency, and redundancy, support new cities and the Internet of Things and other technology changes, migrate to Microsoft 365 Cloud Computing, follow up on the business impact analysis study, develop a disaster recovery plan, continue to support and improve business systems through automation, continue to expand GIS services online and integrations within internal systems, and maintain a secure, reliable, and resilient network. The city clerk's office has quite a bit on their plate for the upcoming biennium in terms of their goals as well. They plan to scan all permanent vital and historical records into Laserfish, fully implement records management system functionality in Laserfish by the end of this biennium, develop and implement a five-year strategic plan for the division, enhance city clerk division records and information management, the paper records programs by developing, implementing a 10-step program. Continue to upgrade Laserfish and enhance, enhance the public hearing examiner calendaring, update all public city clerk policies, and update the city's purchasing and contracting using the rent and equity lens. So I'd just like to take a couple of minutes here just to talk about how our budget responds to the city's business plan. In terms of the goal of providing a safe, healthy, and vibrant community, we have actually coordinated the implementation of the licensing for the rental registration program for safe and healthy housing. We also supported the issuance of bonds and are working with community services on the expenditures of those dollars for park improvements. And the goal, under the goal of promote economic vitality and strategically position Renton for the future, we do a lot of outreach to the business community in support of simplification and education for licensing and taxation. We are also working to coordinate the $1.6 million in CARES funding for businesses with the State Commerce Department and Community and Economic Development. Responding to the goal of building an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic, and racial justice, we have actually developed our equity and inclusion tactical plan in purchasing and contracting initially in 2017. And as I indicated earlier, we have collected a lot of data, both about our vendors and how they fit within women and minority-owned classification. And we've also identified that through our business license process as well. We were planning to do a vendor fair to take this to the next step this year, but unfortunately, COVID has caused us to postpone that effort. We used the language line to help for people who have English as a second language. We added hearing impaired communications tool as well. We promoted, we promote and facilitate reduced utility rate program for low-income seniors and disabled residents, and utility tax rebates for low-income seniors and disabled residents. And again, as I mentioned, HR brought a supported employment program to the city. And Jason Seth, our city clerk, has been instrumental in supervising that employee and mentoring him. And he has reached, not only become very successful in our organization, but he's also accomplished an enormous amount of work for us as well. Under the goal of responding, meeting service demands and providing high-quality customer service, we are actually providing access remotely for over 400 employees, and those employees are meeting their customers' needs. Utility billing is reaching out to customers. And we've implemented additional phone system capability for business licensing as well. And outreach, a lot of outreach by the city clerk staff to educate customers and address their needs. And one other goal that I probably should have listed here, but you heard me mention along the way, and that is the use of Laserfish really does help us address the city's environmental sustainability initiative. Finance, the city clerk's office, and IT are all working hard on the implementation of Laserfish, which helps us truly move into a paperless world. So with that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you, Jan. I really appreciate all the job that your department has done this year. This year has been very, very, very challenging. And I highly appreciate the work of you and all your staff. With that, I see that Councilmember Prince has a question. Councilmember Prince, you're still muted.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Jan, for the presentation. What has the data in our equity and contracting told us? What have we gleaned from that data?
I'm going to have to get back to you on that question. I forgot to look that up. But yes, we have, we do have data on how many of our current vendors are women and minority-owned businesses. But I will, I will respond after inviting to this, to your question.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Any more questions, Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, if it would be all right. Jan, thank you so much for the presentation. It was, there's really just a lot going on here. And it looks like you're really trying to support the community. I think one of the things that's true about administrative services is it's really all about providing access, right, for our community to be able to access government. So with that in mind, what is it that we are doing in a COVID world with this budget to further support public access to employees beyond providing them the technology to work from home? Are we doing anything to more robustly build our, our ability to do these kinds of online meetings? And then specifically, have we explored a possible way to recreate that vendor fair that you described in a virtual environment? Those are my questions.
Good questions. I think we are definitely providing remote access by issuing laptops. We're able to acquire quite a few laptops because of the CARES funding. So we certainly have made a lot of our employees' lives a lot easier, and they are able to truly function. We're running a whole entire city remotely. So it's been hugely successful. In terms of how we interact, we do a lot of Zoom and GoTo meetings, and it's just, we're still carrying on all the same meetings we ever have before, it's just done virtually. In terms of your question about a vendor fair virtually, that is, that is a possibility. And we can certainly follow up and see if there is a way to do that. I think once we get through the budget process and we have a little bit of more breathing room, we will be able to follow up and see if we can accomplish that.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Councilmember Pan?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, Councilmember Benedetti asked about the fair. So I'll ask my follow-up question of another question is that I see, and again, thank you, Jan, for your presentation. It's, I know that you're doing a lot, and all of our staff are, and I'm very much appreciative. But as we talk about the Renton Business Plan and being equitable and inclusive, what are some ways that we can further improve that? And you don't have to answer it now, but I know that we had the language access line, and I don't know how many folks are using that. But how can we improve on what we have had in the past? And I know it's COVID world right now, but if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we will definitely look, explore the possibility of a virtual vendor fair. That sounds kind of intriguing to me, actually. But we certainly are rebuilding that plan. There, it's really a joint effort between the city clerk's office, finance, and the equity and inclusion with Benita and Priti working to update that plan. And they were actually going to help us. Oh, and I should mention that Kristy Rollin was good, was instrumental in that too. She was going to help us kick off that vendor fair. And so now, we are still in the process of updating that plan once again to see how, how we've done it, the data collection side of things, and how we might improve upon it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pan. Do we have any more questions? Okay, Jan, we can continue with the next presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Kelly Beamer is our next presenter, and I will get your slideshow here momentarily.
Great. Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Council President Perez and councilmembers. Kelly Beamer, Community Services Administrator. And our budget begins on page 3-58 in the preliminary budget document. And before I move forward, I just want to say how proud I am and fortunate I am to work with such an amazing and dedicated team in Community Services. It's been, been quite a year. I know all the other departments are feeling the same with their teams, but I know a lot of them are on the call today. I just want to tell, tell them how appreciative I am of all their hard work. Next page. So the department mission is to promote a more livable and inclusive community by providing quality recreation, museum, golf course, and human service programs, neighborhood and special event opportunities, planning and capital improvement projects, modern parks, facilities, and undisturbed natural areas. Next.
Sorry. Sorry.
Just quickly here, the community services organizational chart. You can see that we have 115 full-time employees. Definitely varied, definitely varied divisions in our department, providing many different types of services. I did want to point out the difference from 2019 to 2020 due to COVID, where a lot of our programs and events are supported by supplemental or part-time staff. You can see in 2019 was 220, which is close to an average year for us. In 2020, we have 13. And those are located in the golf course division as they were one of the few and early activities that were allowed through the COVID restrictions. You can, we also, sorry, we also have a couple of vacant positions as well. Some of these were from the early retirements, and others are going to remain vacant until we are allowed to replace them through the restrictions and as we have, and budget capabilities. Sorry, go ahead, Jan. We also have multiple boards and commissions in our department, a lot of great volunteers. We are extremely lucky to have them out in our community. They are truly ambassadors for the city in their respective subject matter areas. But it's great to have such people that are dedicated and wanting to help further Renton in their areas. Here's the city service area representation. You can see that community service is in the five of the six service areas, with local community being the largest of those. Would like to note that the number of positions are not going to be changing through this budget cycle. Within the 115 full-time positions, there are eight parks and trail positions and six facility positions that were approved early in this year. And then we've held out their filling of those positions, obviously due to budget constraints. But our hopes are to get them hired and trained into probably mid-next year. Obviously, lack of staff definitely will equate to different service levels and things. So just wanted to point that out. Some of our performance metrics, and I'll be noting this a little bit later in the presentation as well, but we are going through as a department and updating some of our questions and our surveys in all of our divisions to better capture information and how do we get out further into our community, getting more information. So those will be updated. But you can see some of the results as we've been working through the years on this rent results. So we're going out of the gate then. We want to show how community services focuses and responds to the business plan. And these are just a sampling of some of the things that we do throughout and have been doing throughout the years. So provide safe and healthy, vibrant community. The 2019 adopted Trails and Bicycle Master Plan, which we partnered with transportation on. That was definitely providing safe access through our communities, provide safe parks, facilities, and recreation programs. And then continue to engage recognized neighborhoods. And we'll be touching on this a little bit later as well. But how do we get a wider outreach through the neighborhood program so that we can get to all communities? So we're going to continue engage, to engage those neighborhoods and implement a new program through that. Next. Support Plan Growth: Influence Decision to Foster Environmental Sustainability. The city has been partnering with Seattle Public Utilities for many years with the existing brood stock facility. Our team now is again partnering with them to provide some improvements to the brood stock facility, better capture the spawning salmon and be able to take them upstream to Landsburg, which obviously will be good for the salmon population. And then improving rent and trail system. We've partnered with King County on segments of the East Trail and then also the Lake to Sound segment that is behind the Black River Repairing Force. So just continuing to provide better connections. Again, in the environmental sustainability business plan, updating the city's, all the city's building equipment, providing energy and cost savings. That is huge as a lot of our facilities are aging. And so providing the more updated, again, energy-efficient equipment not only provides better facilitation through our, for our staff and our programs and our buildings, but huge cost savings to the city. We were able to adopt the Tree Ordinance. So urban forestry is definitely a priority focus for us. And as you can see, with 12th Tree City USA Award, Go Team on that one, that's awesome. We also acquired another parcel along May Creek, which increases our open space, our parkland. And then Maplewood Golf Course is in its 11th year as a certified Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary Golf Course, adhering to the environmental stewardship requirements that that requires to continue to be certified. Building an inclusive, an informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic, and racial justice. Again, partnering with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force members along with our senior advisory board members, we did outreach for the senior activity hub, excuse me, senior activity center hub planning, which is where we can, how we're going to provide communities where seniors don't have access to the senior center, what kind of activities and programs and needs do we need to be recognizing. And then the museum again, whoops, wrong page, sorry. Posting a beach closure again in three different languages. That helps provide the information. So we're communicating clearly with our community. And then Human Services, the brochure itself is in multiple languages. And we also developed the Community Resource Card, which you'll see on the lower portion there, which provides direct access to resource and information for the homeless. Next page. Again, on the building an inclusive and informed city, we implemented a new strategy, an inclusive engagement strategy in partnership with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. We utilized to inform the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Areas Plan that was just approved and adopted through the, through the council. That was big, and we'll be going a little more detail in that a little bit later in the presentation. The museum continues to provide definite multicultural exhibits, the Duwamish curriculum, which was, you see here, is adopted by the Renton School District. And then continuing to offer Black History Month, Native American Heritage Month, and Hispanic Heritage Month exhibits and demonstrations. Next, please. Again, meets the service demand and provides high-quality customer service. Community Services collaborates and implemented with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force the annual Renton Multicultural Festival. Obviously, this year will look a little bit different, but we've partnered for the past four years with that. We implemented the new Track Trail Program, which is an We implemented the new Track Trail Program, which is an online program and self-guided nature walk, and it was broadcast to the Rent Schools in English and Spanish. And that was the first in Washington to be up, the Track Trail Program. And then we've collaborated with the school district on the Free Lunch Program. Obviously, last year was the normal year. This year was a little bit different, and we'll cover that a little bit later as well. Next. Again, providing the high-quality customer service, we implemented the Stream Team Program at Highlands Neighborhood Center, received a grant to fully run this program, extremely successful. Won an award from the Washington Recreation and Parks Association for the most innovative program, and has partnered, as you see here, with Central Rendu, Tech Ridge Girls, Highlands and McKnight Schools. So again, an extremely awesome program. And I'm sure most of you have driven by the new Sunset Neighborhood Park. You see the play equipment, the very unique play equipment, the first of its kind in our area, so very excited. This should be opening before the end of this year to get this up in the Sunset and Highlands area. Next. So we'll move on to the Administration Division. The Administration Division supported all the divisions and completions of their major projects and plans. You can see a few listed here. Really excited to be moving forward. We are essentially shovel-ready for the Family First Community Center project. We have all of the permits in place, the construction documents ready. We, just as council know, we've been approved for the land lease with the school district, as well as a site control lease. So as we start moving into early 2021, we'll be looking to go out to bid on this new center, which is much needed in the Benson Cascade area. Next. And then collaborated with all the other departments, established the COVID-19 plan on how to reopen City Hall. And as you can see, some examples down below, our facilities teams have been very active in City Hall specifically in installing the Plexiglas separators for areas that are open to either the public and/or don't have social distancing capabilities. And so they've been busy, and then hand sanitizing stations and everything throughout the, not only City Hall, but all of our active buildings, such as the shops and the golf course in those places. And then, as I mentioned earlier, our department is beginning to review our annual divisional customer satisfaction surveys so that we can really reach out to the communities that we have not been hearing from. So we're working on that and trying to really find out what the needs are and how they want to recreate and live in a good community. Next. So identify, the main priority on this right now is identifying and constructing a more permanent human service provider facility, which currently we have a temporary use permit at the 300 Rainier Building, and we definitely need to find a better, more permanent location to include the feeding program, the severe weather shelter, and a hygiene unit. And then, as we further through that program, also provide wraparound services as well with some of our partners. Next page. So the goals, as we know, we're all going through, obviously, really challenging times right now, and so we want to continue to work through whatever the new normal will look like. We've been very fortunate to have teams that are really busy providing the innovative, creative, efficient processes, programs on how we engage the community, and also how we assist our city staff. And so we're continuing to evaluate what will we want to continue to move forward, because it's been very successful, or maybe tweak some things as we start moving out of different phases, what does that look like in opening back up to the community? And as always, we will always look for alternative funding and grant opportunities. Obviously, that stretches our dollars in being able to provide services and projects out to our public. Moving on to the Facilities Division, we can see here they've been extremely busy through the past couple of years, and especially this year, responding, as I mentioned earlier, to a lot of the COVID-19 work requests. The Facilities Division did present to council a few weeks ago, the Facilities Condition Assessment update, so some of these projects were listed in there, so council will be familiar of what we have completed or they have completed. Want to note that the kilowatt reduction that's noted at the bottom with the utility cost savings on that, that was directly related to the new HVAC unit that was replaced in 2019, so already seeing benefits from that. Next. Goals for the Facility Division, really want to highlight the upcoming projects, again, the ones that we noted to council in our Facilities Condition Assessment update, but these will be huge in assisting city teams and keeping the City Hall safe, as well as RCC comfortable for our programs and our customers. We are developing currently, and will be implementing next year, the citywide lease review procedure so that we can address new leases more timely, review processes, approval processes, amendments, things like that. So we definitely want to make sure we've got it more streamlined. And then, as I noted earlier, we have six approved positions that we've not hired yet, so when we're able to, we need to get those hired and trained so we can continue to provide our services. Next. The Parks and Trails Division, 23 of our full-time park maintenance staffs have maintained all the certifications for the herbicide treatments, playground inspection, water system backflow prevention inspections, flagging, and equipment operations, so they've all stayed current with all of that. And then we've converted the area lightings at Coulon, Carco Theater in Ron Regis Park into the LED lights, which will be another cost savings for the city. And then we also have our first, I think we're coming into our first full year now, or a little over a year, with the City Works Maintenance Management System, and so now we're starting to see some of the records of the maintenance activities, so as you can see here, some of the distribution of where our resources are allocated to, and also helps guide us on how we can better manage our teams and where they need to be out in our system. As you know, the Parks and Trails Division is responsible for identifying and posting and clearing encampment sites on city-owned property in partnership with the police, who also go out with us when we do our required postings. Per the policy, we have to post 48 to 72 hours in advance before we get into and are able to clear an encampment. We are not clearing active encampments unless they are either vacant or they provide hazard to the public, or we've received multiple complaints on activities that are going on in these areas. The city has spent about $160,000 to remove those 60 camps. As you can see here, we have been updating continuously, a lot having to do with COVID, but also in multiple languages, you can see the beach closed sign that was down at Coulon most of the year was in three different languages, and making sure that we're trying to communicate with all of our all of our communities, so they know what our park rules are, regulations, and current environmental conditions as well. Next. And then collaborated with King County and the city of Tukwila to construct a 1.1-mile segment of the Lake to Sound Trail, which I noted earlier, that's back behind the Black River Repairing Forest, so between the Repairing Forest and the railway line is where the trail is located. So eventually, we'll be connecting the Cedar River Trail all the way to the Sound, and this is an amazing segment of that. If you've not seen it, it's pretty fantastic. And as I mentioned earlier, also on the right is the one-of-a-kind in Washington Track Trail Program, which helps guide kids and families through Cedar River Trail Park, and obviously can be used through other parks and learning outdoor activities and about insects, and fish, and birds, and all those kind of things. Next. We implemented the service software, that's the volunteer tracking software, along with five other departments, so we can better streamline how we solicit and register our volunteers with events and things like that. So that's been very successful. And then our summer lunch program, as I noted earlier, obviously this year, a little bit different. In 2019, our AmeriCorps volunteers helped deliver over 25,000 summer lunches to the kids throughout our 2019 summer. And in 2020, instead of AmeriCorps, we had Hunger Corps volunteers that assisted the farmer's market, and also in the distribution of lunches at the senior center. And again, when I mentioned farmer's market, one of the accomplishments, and I know a lot of the council members had attended farmer's market, completely different look this year, had to be a lot smaller, was located in our Big Five lot. We literally had to count the number of people in and only allowed so many people in, and then as they exited, we were able to allow more people back in. But they did a great job this year, being able to, I mean, they had to be inspected every week so that they could continue to operate, so again, a great job. And then the community gardens were open as well this year. Really proud that both the community garden volunteers and farmers, if you will, and our farmer's market farmers, all the extra food was donated to either the senior lunch program or to our area food banks, which was awesome, and it was great to see the seniors get some fresh produce and things like that. So thankfully to them. Next. And as council knows, before COVID, we had the wonderful flood of February, and we had this picture here showing the scouring and the flooding along the Cedar River Trail, which took out a lot of the embankment. The top right picture shows where we've had to reduce the size of the trail down for safety reasons. So our team's working with FEMA and the regulatory agencies to get that bank stabilized and repaired so that we can keep people safe as we move through the trail system. And then they'll also be implementing a new Rent and Outdoors. They started a couple of programs this year with the salmon hikes and the Coulon plant identification hikes, but we'll be doing multilingual guided hikes, interpretive hikes through our city parks for plant identification, bird watching, rent and history, those kind of things, and then finding out from the public what they want to see more of. Next. And then again, increasing the participation in the SNAP program, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, that extends our shoppers' money, if you will, and also assists the Washington State farmers because they are able to purchase more. And also, we'll be installing that FIT Lot that you see down below this year, but we'll be partnering with Recreation Division to activate that coming into next year. Next. Parks Planning and Natural Resources Division, extremely busy again, as I said, adopted the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan in partnership with Transportation, adopted the 2020 Parks and Recreation and Natural Areas Plan. That is huge, and as council knows and is noted there, that by having that plan adopted and certified by the state, we have six years of grant eligibility, which is huge as we start trying to stretch out our projects and our capital dollars. One of the things that I was really proud of the team is the inclusive engagement strategy that they used this time. What they did is, we had, we provided an inclusive engagement specialist. We worked with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force that had five, we had called them five community conversation leaders. They were trained and supported, and they were able to reach out to 197 community members through the inclusive process, which is way more participation than we've received in past planning documents. So really proud of that. We were able to, we had in-person, online, open house materials and engagement materials in the three languages, English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And we also had interpreters present at all of our in-person open houses. So the team did just a really good job trying to make sure that we're hearing what all of our communities and how they want to recreate in our system. And urban forestry, again, taking a huge step forward this year with our new urban foresters, been doing an amazing job. We've got the 12th Tree City USA. We have just included, completed the Urban Forestry Tree Inventory Assessment Report, and in coordination with CED, have the adopted tree, excuse me, forestry ordinance. Again, this is going to move our urban forestry and our tree canopy forward through, into our priorities through rent. We also had an additional accomplishment, it was, again, we acquired the May Creek Parcel, and we were able to, with the bond projects, staffed and trained three new managers and two new capital project coordinators to be able to address those projects. Some of the accomplishments, as you can see here, we'll be completing the Sunset Park Phase 2, which was included $4.3 million in grant funding. We completed three bond-funded playground replacements at Teasdale, Tiffany, and Cedar River Trail Park. You can see below the other big projects, again, as I noted, Sunset Park, but Gene Coulon Park with the replacement of the decking and light-penetrating material, that was a huge project. And then a lot of structural repairs that happened down at Coulon Park as well. So as we noted, we've got the 10-year tree urban forestry management plans to include a new annual tree planting initiative, which will be fantastic. The team's working through four bond-funded projects to complete the design and construction documents, secure permits, and all the things that go along with that, and that has the Coulon Water Walk Phase 1, Coulon Trestle Bridge, Philip Arnold Park, and Coannis Park are the ones that they're focusing on right now. And then you can see below that we have six playgrounds that will be replaced over the next two years. Liberty Park will be in 2021. Coulon Park, although it's starting this year, will be completed in 2021. And then Kennydale Beach and Cascade Park will be replaced play equipment in '21. And then Maplewood Park and Glenco Park will be equipment replacement in 2022. Moving on to our Recreation and Neighborhoods Division, one of the big things, and the team worked really hard through this, and as it notes here, it took a full year, of moving out of our class recreation software system into the Perfect Mind software that was implemented, and as Jan noted too, assistance from IT on that, big time help with that. But our database now is over 17,000. In 2019, we processed over $2 million worth of transactions. The really exciting thing when it comes to inclusiveness and accessibility is this GIS mapping, so we can see where our customers are coming from in areas that we might not be reaching out to or reaching or providing maybe what their types of activities are looking for. So that'll better identify how we market and promote out into the community. We also partnered with the Ray Foundation. Council approved the $5,000 grant for that, for this mini footsall mini pitch, which is a modified version of soccer. This is really exciting. This will be up in Highlands Park, and this will be in a, we'll be repurposing an area in the southeast corner of the park. So we're excited, hopefully, to get it completed in spring of 2021, depending on the restrictions. And then again, just a couple of weeks ago, we, with the Stream Team, received another $261,500 in additional funding to extend the program through 2021. Nice job, team, because this is huge for a very underserved, low-income area in the Highlands, and it's very popular, as you can see. Even now, we're serving over 100 kids a day through virtual programming, the homework help, and pickup kits, and things like that. So fantastic job on the team there. And then our senior center, and then how we're focusing on our senior population. We received the $90,000 in the Veteran Seniors and Human Services levy. This has helped fund and development, excuse me, helped fund the development assessment of our age-friendly Rent and Initiative, which will be wrapping our arms around everything that we do as a city, all the departments, in getting them more unified so that it's easier to access accessibility by our seniors and maybe their support organizations. So that was a huge help, and then, as you know, we're selected as, the ARP was the only city in Washington State to receive that FIT Lot, so which will be at North Highlands Community Center, and we're excited to get that in as well. And then we also have $5,000 that we just received in grants as well to purchase and install new exercise equipment in the senior center. install new exercise equipment in the senior center. Some of the spring-fall transitions that we've had to go through with COVID, again, really proud of the team that have had to essentially rework about everything they did, because almost everything were face-to-face type programming, and so now it's all virtual or quick drop-off pickup. And you can see, without skipping a beat, they have served over 14,000 meals to the seniors, the lunch program, not only during the weekdays, but they're also delivering lunches, or, excuse me, food on the weekends to some of the senior population that doesn't have transportation or assistance to get food. We did the week-long virtual memorial and Fourth of July celebrations to try to keep the community engaged. We distributed over 30,000 masks to the community. And the new fall programming, council will remember that we've had the Truck or Treat event for Halloween. Now that we need to provide a little more social distancing and things, the team is doing a drive-through. So, we have a Halloween drive-through event, it's actually this Friday, it sold out. We have four time slots that are filled up with 130 vehicles, over four, an average of over four people per vehicle, so we expect to, you know, make about 520 people smile that day, and it's really, really excited to do that, also really excited that a lot of the other departments are participating too, which is, that haven't necessarily in the past, and really appreciate the support from that as well. And then, the Equity Inclusion Goals, I touched on it lightly before, but we are looking at expanding the neighborhood grant application process so that it's not just to recognized neighborhoods, but to other neighborhoods, whether they're renters or they do own homes but just aren't in a, through HOA or, you know, in the recognized neighborhood quote category. We're working on that, we'll be bringing that forward to mayor and council for discussion and approval, but we'd really like to be able to activate some of those other neighborhoods that, you know, want to also make, beautify their neighborhoods as well and take a lot of pride in it. And then, the team is also working on, with partnership with this King County Play Equity Coalition. So, we want to be able to ensure equitable access to our sports fields by prioritizing access for girls who don't normally have the higher access to them or priority, and those with disabilities as well. And so, as we work through that, we're going to get feedback and participation from the current user groups, local nonprofit partners, and other groups, and then also other agencies like Renton Innovation Zone and Communities and Schools of Renton. So, we'll definitely be doing some outreach on that. The golf course, a sample of some of the programs that have collapsed, that have been accomplished, I was looking at the netting there. Last February, the heavy snowfall, I mean, excuse me, a year ago, February was '19, the snowfall that collapsed a lot of that netting, so they had to replace that. And then, they continue to leverage the text marketing, increase the number in the database there. And also, as one of the first facilities or activities that were able to open through the governor's orders, they were, they maintained the facility during the 41 days of shutdown, but they also established all the reopening and appropriate sanitizing and facility procedures to be able to safely get customers in and out through the system. And then, the goals for the golf course, besides making revenue, which is a good thing, we need to replace the fire protection piping in the driving range. We'll also replace lighting in the driving range with new LED fixtures, which will also be, obviously, cost, that'd be cost savings for the golf course. And then, continue to build a marketing program with our concessionaire. So, the joint partnership has been a really big help in increasing our database on who we can reach as far as customers. And then, to make a note, the golf course will not have fee increases in 2021. Human Services, as we know, the council, we successfully had started that homelessness community resource event with other nonprofit partners, which provided medical services and other resources for a one-stop shop. We will be continuing that in '21, '22 when, when we're allowed through the COVID restrictions, but definitely, this was a huge hit, and we have a lot of partners that want to be assisting with this. And then, we also coordinated with community organizations to help the one-night count. So, we worked with Reach and Arise and coordinated entry to identify numbers in Renton for the one-night count. We also improved our customer service by, through our Housing Repair Assistance Program database, so now we've got client feedback, so we can see what has worked well, what maybe needs to be improved on, so we're implementing that or have implemented that. And we also completed a lot of manufactured siding replacements with Habitat for Humanity, which just promotes healthy aging and maximizing independence for the vulnerable population and people and adults with disabilities. And also, we partnered with the Bellevue Sunrise Rotary Organization, along with the Renton 21 Club, to provide new home appliances through what's called the Appliance Angel Program. So, Sunrise Rotary and Renton 21 Club provide the funding, it goes towards the Appliance Angel Program. We coordinate with Rod Kirkwood and coordinate with him, that he comes in and installs all of the appliances that we have identified with our low-income residents. So, it's a great program. And then, I want to run through, again, what the CARES Act funding, how we distributed it through our human services team. The original CARES funding, we had $500,000 to be distributed through either rental assistance or food assistance. You can see the agencies that, and the amounts that were awarded to them or allocated to them. We have an additional $400,000 from the new funding that will need to be spent by the end of November as well. Currently, those, that just came through, we're working with our partners and their capacity. So, we have St. Vincent de Paul that's receiving an additional $24,000, and we're still working with some of the other community, or, excuse me, the other agencies to get the rest of that allocated.
Kelly?
Yes?
I don't want to interrupt, but just for clarification, it is my understanding that some of these organizations' headquarters are not in Renton, but all the money that has been allocated is going to be for Renton residents. For example, the Multiservice Center is located in Federal Way, but all the money that they have received is going to be for rental assistance, that, for people that have been proven that they are living in Renton.
That is absolutely, that is absolutely correct. It is the contract we have with these agencies, they have to provide documentation that they are Renton residents, or they will not be reimbursed with the money.
Thank you very much, Kelly.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, next page. These are also COVID-related funding, but this is through the Community Development Block Grants, CB or COVID funding. We had a little over $400,000 to spend. Now, you'll see that that's, the spending is able to, is a little bit longer, so we're able to have that money utilized through June, the end of June of next year. And noted below are the agencies that, again, with rental assistance, food, utility, and capital improvement assistance as well. The second Renton Housing Authority that has $500,000, we, that is actually CARES funding and not CDBG funding, so that funding would have been on the previous page. So, they also have an additional $500,000 for not just Renton Housing Authority residents, but Renton residents as well to allocate out some rental assistance. So, lot of money going out for human services, both in the CARES funding and through the COVID CDBG funding. And then, with the diversity and inclusion lens, they, the human services teams collaborated with all the South County cities in improving the human services grant funding process, so that includes application forms, performance reports, contracts, monitoring visits, all the things that are related to that grant funding. So, did a, did a good job, and they really unified and kind of got their arms around and tried to maybe make it more streamlined for the agencies to apply for funding. And then, again, noting that one of our major goals and priorities is to support the Human Services Strategic Plan in needing to develop a more permanent shelter in supporting our homeless population and/or the population that may need transitional services and things like that, so, such as preparing youth for success, supporting affordability and livability, addressing, obviously, the homelessness, and then also promoting aging, healthy aging as well. So, we want to make sure that we've got all of that wrapped into that program and that And then, work in conjunction with Community and Economic Development, we need to enhance the human services element of the comp plan, so we'll be working with them as we move forward. Also, wanting to make sure that we have all the contracts in place for this funding cycle coming up, completed by April 10th, so the agencies can be spending the funding in, in the service provider area needs as well. And then, also, we want to work with, and have been, with Community and Economic Development. They use the CDBG funds for facade improvements. Sometimes, not all of the funds can be expended through those projects, so the leftover funds, if you will, are allocated towards human services, housing repair projects, so we want to make sure we work on a really good timeline with CED on that. And then, created a biannual survey with the contracted agencies. One of the goals, to make sure that the funding application is streamlined, is clear, we are getting it out to the agencies that can provide services to our residents. And then, obviously, for our low-income older adults, want to get a demonstration project with Habitat for Humanity to rehabilitate the siding of manufactured homes in Renton. There are a lot out there and a lot that need quite a bit of the services. And lastly, Renton History Museum, definitely a busy, busy year. Last year, with new exterior signage, which was funded by For Culture, and a new door canopy. And then, worked with the Low Income Housing Institute, the museum staff researched, wrote, and designed three mini exhibits to educate the new residents in the June Leonard Place about the history of their neighborhood, which has to do with the Duamish people and the Duff family who lived in that area. And then, as you can see, they offered seven temporary exhibits that have ranged from Dungeon and Dragons to the Centennial of Women's Suffrage. Then, upcoming goals, this is exciting, the Facing the Inferno. Wildfire photographer Carrie Greer, she's, this is about the climate change, so it's a first-of-its-kind about all these wildfires that are happening, so that exhibit is coming up in the summer of 2021. And then, also building, talking about the new normal, so we've met with a few council members and Community Services Committee, we're looking about how we can provide more online services. Museum does have local history and study guides and video activities on its web pages, and also the newsletters are available as well. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions? The council member Prince.
Thanks, Madam President, and thank you, Kelly, for that presentation, it was great.
Thank you.
Community Service does a whole lot of work, and so that was a very comprehensive presentation. My question is on human services, with the impact of COVID and the way it's impacting our communities. Do you know where we stand as far as human services funding compared with our neighboring or comparable cities?
We are, I will have to double-check and confirm, but we are mid to low end on the funding side. That being said, it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison, where the city has provided, you know, like the 300 Ray Near Building or Center Pope, the jail, you know, the area in the basement of City Hall. We've done a lot of in-kind as well, but as far as the actual funding itself, you know, again, it's, I think we're mid-ish, and I will confirm that and get that out to council.
Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you, council member Prince. Council member Benedetti?
Thank you, Kelly, that was fabulous. Really, really appreciate all that you do, your team is amazing. And one of the things that I think has been really incredible is the way that you've adapted to doing things in a COVID world. What I'm wondering, given that, I think we're going to probably, at least, there's going to be some major impacts through '21, I have some questions around our adaptability on some of these projects with regards to COVID, and I was wondering if I could ask after that. First, if there are, I know that, back, looking at, you know, the first set of slides, you were talking about wanting to have opportunities to have engagement with diverse communities in the Renton area, and I'm just wondering if that's something that might be adapted virtually? And then, I also am wondering if the resource fair is something that we might be able to go through even in a limited capacity? I'm thinking that Renton Innovation Zone has been doing some work in this regards in Skyway, looking at community resources that are available for people, and I'm just wondering if there is a way to retool the resource event safely in a COVID world? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Benedetti. The first question, virtually, yes. As far as accessing our diverse populations, we do have connections out in our communities, also with the people that have been registered through our programs, working with multicultural, the task, Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, some of the police connections, so we will be reaching out more virtually that way. And we do have some surveys coming up that we, we can't just send them out, you know, all the time, they have to be paper and/or virtual, so that those that don't have the same technology will have access to them as well. So, we're definitely going to be improving on how we reach out. And then, secondly, on the Homeless Resource Event or Fair, if you will, we can and will be doing that, our teams have been, because it's a pretty small team in human services, have been focused on the CARES funding and the COVID funding, trying to get that out and the contracting out, and trying to make sure that we're accessing the right agencies that have capacity and able to meet the requirements. So, yes, we will start looking at, you know, similar to our, you know, our mask giveaway to the community, it'll have to be in a location that we can control how the community, the homeless community is able to access and the number of people that can come through, but we'll have to work through that as we move forward. But we definitely, it was huge success, and our partners are at the ready to want to come in and help with that.
Thank you, council member Benedetti. Council member Van?
Thank you, Madam President. And I have a couple of questions, but I know the council member McIrvin has his hand raised as well. At once, first, I just want to say thank you, thank you, Kelly, and to your team. I know it's been rough with everything, with COVID, and all departments are doing fantastic, but like both of my colleagues have mentioned, you guys are instrumental in really keeping that continuity for our community, and the work that you put into it is amazing. And I know that you've done so well with pivoting and adapting to this new environment, and I do appreciate the fact that you made ownership, homeownership is no longer a requirement. That shows that, you know, we are really trying to key in to equity, because a lot of our residents don't necessarily have home, the mortgage, right? So, because 42% of our population are renters, and so I very much appreciate that, thank you. You know, you mentioned about the breakdown of the Grant CARES Act. I wanted to know, what are some additional, and you don't have to answer it here, but perhaps via email, of the requirements, some measurements that we have for those folks who are accepting the CARE money, maybe as far as the reporting aspect?
Yeah, I can forward that. I know a few of the questions that we'll forward on some of the answers to, but I'll forward what's in our contract requirements, so.
Thank you. And then, I'll, I yield to council member McIrving, and then I'll ask some other questions.
Thank you, council member Van. Council member McIrving?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. So my question is kind of a follow-up on Councilmember Prince's question. He asked my question, so I'm going to ask it in a slightly different way. To go along with that data you produced for us, I would love to also see how we have funded human services perhaps over time. I don't necessarily need to see breakdown cities, but it'd be curious to see how we've compared in the last few budgets. I know the needs have grown, and so I'm imagining it would be helpful to see kind of not only where we are in the pecking order of cities amongst us, but how we've funded it over the years. And then if I can kind of piggyback on that, the question I guess I would ask then is, as you brought up the in-kind services and such that go with that, it would be the slide you had on the shelter facilities and such, is that as far as identifying funding sources, I would assume would be separate from what we normally fund with this? Would that fit from the money that we would be able to allocate from that sales tax, for example? Or is that something that's being looked at?
That will be something that the mayor has scheduled a meeting with staff to take a look at how we want to implement that. But that would definitely be something we'd like to discuss and take a look at. And then just for council to know as well, not just through the human services funding process, which is what we've done, you know, through our budget cycle, but the city and mayor and council have also approved additional funding to like assist reach over the, you know, last couple of years and things like that. So I definitely don't want, even though we might, in just the human services grant funding, might look like we're a little bit, you know, on the lower side. I want the council to know for sure, and the mayor, and definitely our community, that the city is doing a lot of work to try to help our homelessness. And like Councilman McGurven mentioned, it's definitely an increasing need. So we'll provide those answers, but I just, I wanted to make sure it wasn't like we are not doing anything.
Thank you, Councilmember McGurven. I have several questions, Kelly, but I'm going to start with one, and then I'm going to go around the room, and then I'm going to come back. But I want to follow up with a question regarding the question from Councilmember Prince and Councilmember McGurven. My feeling is that we have to start creating an infrastructure of opportunity. And now, what I feel that we're focusing so much attention of the human services portion and the funding that we are allocating is not just for homeless services anymore. It has to be also for communities that are struggling every single level, which is exactly what you guys are doing right now with the CBDDG funding.
Right.
So before, we pretty much work a lot, yes, in communities that were struggling and also helping people that needed shelter and homelessness. But right now, the, we, in the recent years, obviously, we have, we have more requests for increasing these funds to other communities that we need, they need help to thrive, more than anything with also we call the reparations. So I'm just going to leave there, because I know that the answer you just give us, so just for the record, I just wanted to add to that conversation. I'm sorry, I just muted myself. With that, Councilmember Prince?
Thank you, Madam President. Kelly, just another question that popped in my mind. Has your department done anything just kind of to gather with our neighborhood leaders to figure out ways to make sure they're able to keep community cohesion going on during COVID? I mean, I know we've not done neighbor to neighbor, I think, for a year or so. Has there been anything else that we've done to just try to figure out ways that we can give them tools to keep that neighborhood cohesion going on?
Yes, we have, the team's been sending out, and I would have to find out the frequency on it. The team's been definitely connecting with our neighborhood associations through our neighborhood program, also with, especially with all the activities that we're trying to engage the entire community, obviously, through Nextdoor and our other avenues, we're definitely connecting with associations. And we also discussed early on about the postponement or the holding of the neighborhood grant program as it currently, you know, is distributed. So we want to work through what we can do with that and try to distribute that a little bit more, so it's wider spread out into our neighborhoods. So, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. And I think I can answer your question, because I was in the only neighborhood association meeting online, which was the North Renton Neighborhood Association. Councilmember O'Halloran and Councilmember Benedetti were there as well. And we did ask this question to the department and staff, and they said that no, they wouldn't, they had not had any online events, or if you want to call it, not even meetings. So I did ask if we can consider to engage with the neighborhood associations or homeless associations to encourage them to, you know, to continue this program during these times that is very challenging with COVID. But it is very important not to lose, you know, that important and important program that we have created during years in the city. I don't, that's my sense of it. Councilmember Van?
Well, I think Councilmember Benedetti had her hand raised before me.
No, your hand was raised before hers, but if you want to.
Awesome. Thanks. I guess one question I have is about the golf course. If we have any breakdown data of usage of folks who are residents or non-residents, and of course by ethnicity, I'd love to see that if we do.
Yeah, actually, because the golf course, part of the, part of the golf course was deeded to us through King County for a dollar and had to stay as an active recreational or passive recreational area. So part of the golf course and also part of Ron Regis. With that, we are not allowed to charge resident or non-resident rates, so we, there's no way to get that data. And we don't, as far as the, the collection of any other type of, you know, like racial use or whatever, we, there's not a, we're not tracking that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Benedetti?
Well, thank you. So Kelly, I saw early in the presentation, you talked about completing or the expectation that we would complete Family First in the, in this next cycle in 2122. What I'm not seeing, though, is extra staff to run it. So what's the plan there?
So part of the, like I mentioned, the land lease was just approved by Renton School District, and obviously, council, Renton Council signed it as well, and the site control. The service provider in there as far as managing the building will be Health Point. And then Doug Baldwin's Community Foundation will be running the recreational programs. And we are, and I think we had, I know I mentioned to the school board, and I believe we had to counsel as well, that we're working through the operational agreement. So we did the land lease, site control plan, so that we could get that into our grant applications and things, and be able to get some more funding. And then noted through those agreements or leases was the operational plan, and we are working on that right now. So we have a draft business plan that we've been going back and forth with Doug, but Doug's also, Doug Baldwin's also working with Health Point. Health Point has operational plans, obviously, because they have other facilities and know how to run those. So anyway, we are completing those as quickly as we can as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. So I do have another question regarding to the golf course. So the, on the list of community services, most of the 2021, 2022 proposed budget, the total expenditure is higher than the total revenue, which is expected because we're providing services to those areas, except for the golf course. The golf course, the total revenue is higher than the total expenses, and of course, that's the purpose, because the golf course, it's, it has to be self-sufficient and also provide revenue for the city. However, could you please guys provide, in January, you provide, what was the total expense for 2019 and 2020 compared to the total revenue that was proposed or forecast?
So if I, if I'm understanding, so you want the, or the actual expenditure for 2019, 2020, and then what's estimated, because we're not through this year, so what's the revenue we're looking at for 2019, 2020?
Yeah, in page, if you, in page, in section three, page 60, you have the breakdown where you have the estimate and propose for 2021 and 2022, that the total expenditure, of course, it's a proposed. And then you have your total revenue, which is also, it's the expectation. For, you did exactly the same for the 2019, 2020. What I want now is the real numbers.
Yeah.
The end result, okay? Thank you. Councilmember Van?
Thank you. I have two more questions. So I see that we have gotten the grant, and again, I very much appreciate staff and your leadership, how we are now the, pretty much the only state, the only city in regarding to getting the AARP designation of age-friendly. And, you know, for me, seniors is really the backbone of our culture. And so for me, I'm very much appreciative and very honored that our staff has done all this. So within the grants that we received through King County, the veterans and seniors levy, are there any particular, are there any, I guess, creative ways we can go about to support veterans as well? Because I know there are some veteran needs in our community.
Yes, if we, if we had those needs, we, you know, we do work with the seniors, obviously, through, you know, our lines of business and everything. And really quick, I just want to correct that the only, the first in the state or only in the state is for that fit lot activity. That's, that's the only, we are the third or fourth in the state for the AARP designation. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. But yes, if there are, you know, if there are veteran needs out there that we're not hearing about, or, you know, truly something that we need to take a look at, we'll, we'll need to have the staff capacity to be able to do that, to add that to, you know, the seniors and the homeless and those kind of things. But I'm currently not aware of Renton veteran needs besides through our senior centers and our senior programs. But more than happy to take a look at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Council, let me, let me see, Councilmember Benedetti?
Kelly, I just have one last thing. And this is going back to something that Council President Perez had spoken to, which is support for our neighborhoods in this time. I'm wondering if we have considered what those specific supports might look like so that more neighborhoods are able to get online and do their meetings? Does that look like Zoom licenses that they have access to? Does that look like using the city's page to advertise to residents when that, when those meetings might be happening? I'm just wondering if we can get creative in those supports so that more communities feel like they have the ability to have those broader forums?
Yes, thank you. I'll reach out to our team. I know they have been doing outreach to the neighborhoods, but to Councilwoman Perez or Council President Perez is, no, it's not, they're not necessarily doing, we don't run the association meetings. We will attend when there's, you know, time that we need to provide information or they need assistance. But I can definitely have the team reach out and see if there's a way that we can assist. I don't know whether it's, you know, like the neighborhoods would need to purchase Zoom licensing or, you know, some type of technology to allow them to do that. So I'll definitely see what we can do.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Kelly, even though we do not run or we don't coordinate the neighborhood associations or homeless associations meetings, in the past, we did coordinate with them the picnics. So that is special time, that is special gathering that we used to have during the summers, to have that opportunity to connect us with them and them with us and keep, keep helping them, you know, to nurture those, those neighborhood associations. That is where I think Councilmember Benedetti is thinking that we can help them, providing a platform that for them, if they don't know how to do it, assist them. And if we can help them promoting their meetings so they can reach more people, maybe we can use our own platforms. I will, right now.
And I will, I'm going to reach out to the team, because they may have been doing some things with them I'm not aware of, but I completely agree that that is an opportunity for us to make sure we're still engaging with our neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, thank you. Kelly, forgive me if I missed this part. You might have, you might have talked about it, and I might have just missed it. But did you address how we would be evaluating the, putting to good use the sales tax revenue that we just came up with for the homeless, and how we'll kind of manage that work project this, this coming year?
Yeah, I think I touched on a really high level. Councilman McGurven, I think, asked the question, or a similar question. Our mayor has scheduled a meeting with staff, so with the administrators, to talk about what that plan looks like. And I know that addressing, obviously, homelessness and programs around that is a, is a priority within that. So it's still at really early stages, but I know that we'll be reporting back to council.
Okay. And, and I'm sorry that I made you repeat that. And so you'll, you'll see it as a, it'll probably end up being a fairly significant staff draw for you, I imagine, right? Exciting.
Yes.
But a lot of work.
Okay, it's a much-needed area that we haven't been able to put a lot of time to. So yeah, this is exciting.
Good. Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Van?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's kind of along the same line with Councilmember Corman, as far as our getting creative and then the funding that we'll be getting through sales tax. But as we all know, COVID-19 really exacerbated the inequities of our community members and services, right? And of course, city renters tried our best. But as we come out of COVID-19, which we haven't yet, what are some, I guess, have, you know, through the whole comments, the last few weeks and so forth from our community, one of the need in the community is the RISE program. Have you or your staff have kind of explored or looked into any of those or potential projects or programs that support communities that are at greater risk?
Did you say the RISE or the RISE program?
RISE.
Yeah, I'll have to touch base with Guy, our human services manager, has been in multiple meetings with the South County Cities and, and other agencies. And right now, obviously, not necessarily completely addressing your question, but it's definitely a need for the, like the severe weather shelter. How we, how do we respond to that in COVID times where there's got to be some social distancing? So we're working with our contracted partners and the other agencies and cities to try to get that more unified or coordinated through all of, all of us. Because when one city opens or one jurisdiction opens a shelter, we are all supposed to open, so not, not one jurisdiction gets overrun with, with guests or clients. So I will touch base with Guy and find out if he's had contact with the RISE program and, and any thoughts on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Van. Kelly, RISE is the racial investment to secure equity. And it's the Community Inclusive American Dream Fund to support radical social injustice and creating equity for Black communities, which is what I am asking in the, in the budget during the 2021, 2022 Goals for Human Services Division. Maybe we can add some of the, one of the goals there could be to create an infrastructure for opportunity for our diverse community. But that's just a suggestion. And coming back to the 2021, 2022 Goals for the Human Services Division, you have a bullet that is say, create additional funding streams to support the Human Services Strategic Plan of Developing and Enhance, and Enhance Homeless Shelters and Opportunities to Support the Annual Agency Funding Cycle. Could you talk more about that, please?
Yeah, and that's, I think, what the couple of questions that have come from council, how do we measure up to other cities on, you know, as much of the like funding on, on our grant funding side. But to be able to increase, and then also, obviously, for what I talked about earlier in the presentation with a more permanent location for the meal coalition, the severe weather shelter, a hygiene center, those kinds of funds, we'll have to be looking and applying for grant funding, potentially any sponsorship funding, getting some maybe in-kind donations from in-kind donations from businesses that may, you know, allow us to use property or equipment. So, it's literally trying to find every ounce of money and services and help that we can to try to get this in place, so, if that, if that makes sense. Because obviously, the city right now, we're on a baseline budget, so we don't, there's not a lot of additional monies floating around, so, you know, that's why we're out looking for what we can, we can get.
Thank you. Does anybody have more questions for Kelly at this point? Now, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, last question. I just wanted to ask, you know, and of course, please send us an email, how we can support you, because community services as a department is just, you know, so broad, but all the, all the services that you provide, and of course, human services and the growing need in our community. So, how can we as council support you and your team?
Oh, thank you for that. I think council does support us tremendously, and we really appreciate it by asking the questions and looking at things in a different way and bringing that to our attention, or, you know, it's that two-way conversation, so I think we do get, we are very supported by council, and thank you. But if there is something that is a big need besides, you know, finding that money tree somewhere, which I know Jan's asked for, I, you know, we feel very appreciated and supported by council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Anybody has any more questions to Kelly, for Kelly right now?
Madam President?
Councilmember O'Hara.
Yes, I just want to, you know, echo what everybody has said, and I want to plead, before we move on, to Chief Adelli, if we can maybe have a five-minute bio break?
Yeah, I will make a break. I want to make a five-minute break, but anybody else right now? Okay, just a reminder that everybody can keep sending your questions during the week to every department if they, if they have more questions. I'm gonna leave just one question here for both of you, Jan and Kelly, if you can just send me the information back. I noticed in your expenditure budget by category, in the parks, planning, and natural resources, you increased by double your original budget from 2019 to 20, no, your original budget from 2020 to the actual budget is double than what you estimated. And you are proposing the same amount of a change of 79.4% increase in the other services and charges. If you can, please send us an email telling us exactly why these increases were necessary. I would appreciate it. And with that, I'm gonna make a five-minute break, and we will be back at 5:30, 38. Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you.